I would just like to thank the audience for your patience. We'll start up in about three minutes. Welcome to the July 11th, Revere City Council. Please stand and salute the flag.
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Roll call of the members of the city council. Counselor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Counselor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselski.
Here.
Here, Counselor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Counselor Rotundo.
Present.
Here, Counselor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Silvestri is absent, and Council President Fisgotti.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of June 27th?
So move.
Calendar item number three, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the city council awards certificates of commendation to RHS track athletes JV Kuna, Kenny Guerrero, Ricardo Goncalves, and Mark Marquesi for qualifying for and competing in the Nike Outdoor Nationals at the University of Oregon. Additionally, the coaches Sam Nang Ross, Raquel McDonald, Brian Scotta, and Sean Conboy be recognized for their guidance and leadership through the process.
Mr. President, if I may, we're still waiting on one of the athletes. These guys are supposed to be fast, though. I don't know why they're taking so long.
We can always push that back and have a suspension of rules or move forward and come back to it.
Thank you very much.
No objection from anybody.
Next up is the zoning subcommittee report.
Counselor Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we had two ordinances in front of us for relative to housing in our zoning subcommittee. The first, 22-152, an ordinance relative to accessory dwelling units. That one was, came out favorably unanimously as amended. So I'd like the clerk to offer the roll call with its amendments.
Okay. On the second reading as amended? On the third reading as amended? Third and final? Roll call for engrossment or endowment as amended?
On an ordinance relative to the legalization of accessory dwellings as amended, Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri is absent, and Council President Fisgotti.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has been engrossed and ordained as amended.
And, Mr. President, our second agenda item, 22-168, an ordinance establishing an inclusionary zoning in the city of Revere failed unanimously failed. So I'd like to recommend that not proceed. I don't believe we have to take a roll call on that, do we, Madam Clark?
Ordered.
Okay, so we reported unfavorable, unanimously unfavorable. Thank you.
Ordered on a second reading? Ordered on a third and final reading? Roll call? Is that, roll call and engrossment and endowment?
For engrossment and ordainment on an ordinance establishing inclusionary zoning in the city of Revere. A yes vote would approve the inclusionary zoning ordinance and no vote would not approve the inclusionary zoning ordinance. Counselor Cogliandro.
No.
No, Counselor Keefe.
No.
No, Counselor McKenna.
No.
No, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski.
No.
No, Counselor Rizzo.
No.
No, Counselor Rotundo.
No.
No, Counselor Sorino.
No.
No, Counselor Silvestri is absent, and Council President Fisgotti.
No.
No, the ordinance fails. Next up is communications. Calendar item number six, communication from the election commissioner relative to the special election warrant for Board Five.
Mr. Fahy?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Paul Fahy, election commissioner. You have before you the warrant for the special Ward Five election on July 19th, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to take them now.
Mr. President, motion to accept placed on file.
If there is no objection, motion to accept placed on file. Thank you. Yes, the kids are here, so we can go back. Thank you.
So going back to calendar item number three, this is a motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the city council awards certificates of commendation to RHS track athletes JV Kuna, Kenny Guerrero, Ricardo Goncalves, and Mark Marquesi for qualifying for and competing in the Nike Outdoor Nationals at the University of Oregon. Additionally, the coaches Sam Nang Ross, Raquel McDonald, Brian Scotta, and Sean Conboy be recognized for their guidance and leadership throughout the process.
Counselor Cogliandro. Jerry, I might need your help handling.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll get rid of this. Push that off. Actually, just push it off the.
Yeah, come on, Oscar. Don't hold us up.
Are we gonna do the presentation first before we, you know? Thank you very much, Mr. President. So, the Nike Outdoor Nationals. To qualify for that, you just have to be one thing, which is fast. So, back in May, this team tried to qualify and they missed it by one second. I'll just use my teaching voice. So they tried to qualify for this event and missed it by one second, and they did not give up. They buckled down, they trained harder, and the next time, they got in just, just under a second, they qualified. And this is something that's very difficult to do. 1,600 meters. Who ran the 200s? Who ran the four? Big eight. My man. So, not only are you guys amazing athletes, but you guys showed perseverance and you didn't give up, and I dig that so much. That's so important in an athlete. I also want to talk about how much the community came together to raise $10,000, and it was almost accidentally $20,000, thanks to Carol Ty. Almost accidentally. But these guys, these guys, this community is amazing. When they need something, especially for our students, they raised all the money to get the coaches and the athletes there. And I just want to say how proud I am. I think I speak for everybody on this council. As a coach, as a teacher, I am so proud of you guys. Coach Sam, and I'm sorry, I don't know the other coaches by names, but these guys over here as well that I'm standing in front of. So, thank you very much and for your efforts. And I'm gonna read one of these really quickly. Thank you, sir. Certificate of commendation. An acknowledgement of your incredible athletic accomplishments as a member of the Revere High School track team, excuse me, track and field team in qualifying for and competing in the 2022 Nike Outdoor Nationals, which was held at the University of Oregon. Special recognition to all of you. And may I mention that, out of all the qualifiers, these boys came in fourth place. Fourth place. Give them a round of applause. I'm gonna have Council President Fisgotti help me pass these out today. First is JV Kuna. Kerry Guerrero. Kenny Guerrero, my apologies. Coach Sam Nang Ross. Is it coach, assistant coach, was it Raquel? Coach Raquel McDonald. Coach, right, Brian? Oh, Brianna Scotta. Coach Sean Conboy. Ricardo Goncalves. Mark Marquesi. Marquesi, that's my, and that's it, guys.
Calendar item number seven, communication from the mayor relative to a park resolution grant for Liberty Park.
Do we have anybody here on this matter? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call?
Mr. President?
Yes?
It is in, it's in North Revere. If I might just.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. My apologies.
No, thank you. I would appreciate the council if we could approve this tonight. These will be improvements to Liberty Park, which is different from Harmon Park. Harmon Park is right on Salem Street. Liberty Park is further in the North Revere neighborhood up on the hill. There have been a lot of families who have been asking for kind of a rehabilitation of the park, and El Baker has agreed to work with the North Revere Neighborhood Group and the residents up there to make those necessary nice improvements so that we can have a nice playground once again up there. So I would appreciate if we could vote this out favorably. Thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call?
Shall the city council approve a resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Parkland Acquisition and Renovations for Communities program and construction improvements to Liberty Park? Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe is absent. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri is absent, and Council President Fisgotti.
Yes.
Yes, the resolution has been approved. Calendar item number eight, communication from the city auditor relative to the Revere TV appropriation.
Mr. Fiskay.
Good evening, council. Rich Fiskay, CFO, 221 Broadway. This is pretty much a perfunctory transfer that we make every quarter to move the receipts of the cable access money we get from our general fund to the receipt reserve for appropriation for Revere TV. So, any questions?
Seems pretty straightforward. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the council? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call.
Shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $166,097.19 from the Cable Access Receipt Reserve Fund for Revere TV's quarterly invoice? Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri is absent, and Counsel President Piscotti.
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number nine, communication from the city auditor relative to the fiscal year 2022 year-end transfers.
Good evening, councillors. Before you tonight is our year-end transfers that we do typically every year about this time when we close the books. These transfers are necessary to ensure that we close with all of our accounts in a positive fund balance so that we don't have any penalties from Department of Revenue when we go to certify our free cash. So this list is a little longer. We did refine the appropriation scope last year, the salary and non-salary, so you may see some more transfers than normal. But these are what the transfers that we need to ensure we close the books with no deficits in any of our general fund, our enterprise fund. So happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions from the council? Counselor Novoselski.
Just a quick question. You gave us a list of monies, but didn't say where the... Are these coming from or where they going to?
Yeah, the top list of where the accounts that they're coming from, and then the bottom is where they're going to when they foot out. I think it's $2 million in the aggregate.
There was a problem with the packets when they were completed for some reason. When you print it out from... Only the odd days are printing it. I can't figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, it wasn't my...
No worries.
It was fine electronically, but when we printed it out, it was just not working.
Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call.
Shall the City Council approve the fiscal year 2022 year-end transfers as reported by the chief financial officer? Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri is absent, and Counsel President Piscotti.
Yes.
Yes, the year-end transfers have been approved. Calendar item number 10, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Lauren Devella as a constable.
I'm going to refer that to appointments.
Motions. Calendar item number 11, motion presented by councilors Novoselski and McKenna that the mayor request the police chief to install an electronic speed reader on Winthrop Avenue for westbound traffic between Beach Street and the Revere Senior Center.
Counselor Novoselski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was contacted by some of the residents and the seniors from the senior center that there's a lot of speeding going on from coming down from Immaculate Conception, heading towards the senior center. And I talked to Counsel McKenna, and we both agreed that we should get the speed machine from the police department to put up halfway between Immaculate and the senior center so people know how fast they go and try and slow them down. So I'll leave the rest up to Counsel McKenna if she'd like to say anything.
Counsel McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. When the seniors ask for something, I mean, they don't ask for anything. And when they're scared to cross the street and Winthrop bad because cars are speeding, we have to do something. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ira, for bringing this motion up.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just wanted to share something that we're doing on Cushman Ave. We're going to be putting a speed table on Cushman Ave somewhere between Broadway and Adams Street. So it's basically, it's like a long, it looks like a long speed bump. And it's about three to three and a half inches high, and the vehicles are going to have to slow down. It's not a speeding monitor, and I know we have those all over the city, but that street in particular has had its problems. But I just wanted to share that with my fellow ward councillors that we are doing that, so we'll see how it works.
Mr. President, one last thing, if I may.
Sure.
Just to add to that, they're also putting one on Campbell Avenue, and it's I've been working for, for seven years, and finally got someone in the administration to listen to us. And Cushman and Campbell Ave are the key locations that we're trying to slow down the speeding, so.
Great, that's great to see. Any other questions? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by councilors Rizzo and Serino that the mayor request the DPW to install a park bench at a location to be determined by the family of Rose Napolitano in recognition of her 90th birthday and her lifetime of contributions to the city of Revere, including her career at the Revere Housing Authority, her leadership in the Patriots Senior Center, Revere First, and as an active member of the Revere Senior Center.
Counsel Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion basically speaks for itself. Rose, there's not many people that have lived here for as long as I have certainly that don't know who Rose is. She's been an integral part of our community, and her family has reached out and wanted to honor her with a park bench that I believe Paul Argenzio might be able to help us locate. It's going to be privately funded, so there'll be no cost to the city. It's just a way to acknowledge her contributions. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Counsel McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a great motion from my councillor to my left. I just wanted to say, when I first got elected, Rose would call me all the time and say, "The senior senator is having an ice cream party. There's a block party somewhere else." I mean, she'd call me and tell me everything. It was crazy, and I loved her for that. So I think this is a great motion. Thank you.
Counsel Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rose has been a staple in this community for a long time. She's, when you talk about engagement, she's the epitome of engagement. She's always, she's been involved in city events, in working in the city. She's just been a public servant and a active citizen in our city as long as I've known her. So it's well deserved.
Counsel Novoselski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, if there's any, I know a lot of folks of our seniors that work a lot for the city, but if there's anyone that really, really, really deserves something, it's Rose. She was one of the first people that started the senior prom and working with everybody, and she's just a terrific lady and has put her heart and soul into everything that she has done. And it's all mainly for the city of Revere. She doesn't do it for herself personally. She does it for everybody involved. So congratulations and thank you, council, for putting this in for her.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, and to echo the comments of Counselor Novoselski, Rose has been truly an advocate for seniors from everything, from housing to assisting people find the appropriate health care. More importantly, she is just, from the time that I've met her, which is probably well over 20 years ago, that's been probably her greatest attribute is that she is an unconditional advocate for the seniors of Revere. This is well fitting.
Counsel Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was happy to co-sponsor this motion with Counsel Rizzo because Rose is kind of actually like the godmother of Revere, as they called her years ago when, you know, when she was in her prime, obviously working for Revere Housing, and then just being an advocate for our citizens, our seniors. And she'll always, you'll always know where you stand with Rose Napolitano, too. She's famous for her wit, and she tells it like it is. So I will save my more prepared comments for when we dedicate something in her honor, but I'm glad that we were able to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. And if I can just end on saying happy birthday to Rose. I had the pleasure of sitting with her and chatting for quite some time last week. So she's always, you know, she just brings you... It's always nice to talk to her. She's just as true as they come, and she tells it the way it is. So I just want to wish her a happy birthday, and what a great motion. Thank you. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the mayor direct the DPW to ensure that all utility companies are patching roads properly.
Counsel Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a lot of work going on in my area of Ward Three currently, and they're digging into the ground. And when they're patching it, it's either bowing down or it's almost like a speed bump. And I'd really like to see them focus more on keeping it level with the street. That's all. Thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the mayor be requested to direct the Revere Housing Authority to remove all dumpsters on Coolidge Street and Constitution Avenue.
Counsel Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that they currently do not have their contract with capital waste, and I'm sure that they put those four 15-yard dumpsters there as a quick fix to their trash issues. But that can't happen again. They're putting these 15-yard dumpsters on the sidewalk in front of people's homes. Since then, I've been down there multiple times. They're not, they're no longer there. And I'd like to change the wording of this motion, if it's possible, that the mayor direct the housing authority to find new methods for trash removal and further that they no longer utilize dumpsters placed on sidewalks outside of people's homes for trash collection.
Any questions? On the motion as amended? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. No further business, and this concludes the July 11th City Council meeting. Motion to adjourn. Thank you.